I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. The open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak during open forum? Yes, please just come up to the mic. Thanks. Make sure you turn the mic on.
It's on. As long as I'm here. The strip of land that runs along Belvedere Cove on the main island, which is currently city-owned, has a deed that talks about structures. And it's a deed that was given by the Belvedere Land Company and creates a lot of problems. And I would love to have people, I would love to strongly suggest that somebody get together with the Belvedere Land Company before it ceases to exist and get that deed sorted out. So it would give the city a lot more flexibility on working in that tidal area. And I think there's a lot of very simple things you could do, like cause, like a structure is only something that is so many feet above the ground. But it would allow residents like us to have pathways that go down without all of the problems associated with you guys in discussing all that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during open forum? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to reports, are there any commissioners who wish to provide a report on any standing committees? Or any staff?
I have no reports.
Okay, so moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council staff or public, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence they appear on the agenda. Would any members of the Planning Commission like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, I would like to pull item two and item three. Should we vote on consent calendar item one and then, okay, so can I please get a motion for consent calendar item one?
Second.
We, do we need a motion? Sorry, we need a motion. Need a motion first.
All right, then, but I'll, I will, I will make a motion to approve consent item number one.
My second.
Third.
Okay, so moving on to. And sorry, we need a vote. Yes, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to item two. So I just want to pull this and have a vote on it separately because I did. Exactly, 312 Beach, because I did not support the variance last month. So let's just vote on that individually.
Excuse me, Chair, I just want to make sure we take public comment on item two before the commission votes on it.
Yes, sorry. So any public comment on item two? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on item two on 312 Beach?
I'm sorry, Chair Johnson, I just saw hand raised for item two. Dave, you should be able to unmute yourself and talk if you'd like.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I'm just available for answering any questions that might arise if there are any.
This is the architect? Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. There any questions on 312 Beach?
I had, I had, I had a question. Are there any changes other, other than providing the, the plans additional information, but are there any, are there any changes in the proposed plans for the, for this, for the space or the materials or the design? Or anything from that that we, that we reviewed at the last meeting?
We, from our standpoint, the, the current staff report basically took the design review portion off the agenda. So this item is only related to the variance and the existence of the wall. We do have our submittal that generated the request to apply for variance, if you'd like to see it.
No, I, but then, and that's, that's actually exactly what I, what I was asking is that, is that there have been no, I just want confirmation or yes or no that there haven't been any changes in the design or the materials or the use of the room, et cetera, from what we, what we reviewed before.
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, can I please?
I'm sorry, I have one more person on Zoom that has their hand raised.
Yeah.
Scott, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak if you'd like to.
Good. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, and you can see me. So I just wanted to make sure that the planning commissioners understand that as far as the use of this space, we have been working with the staff for over 18 months with regard to the use of the space. And just by way of example, this is a permit, if you can see it. Maybe you can't see it, I don't think you can.
We have, no, we see a lovely beach, we don't see a permit.
Well, can you see this? Maybe, there, can you see that? Oh, there you go.
There we go.
This is a top-down drawing of the space dated from July 2023 that Rebecca and Sammy are very well aware of. This is, shows a bathroom, shows a kitchen, I think it shows a bed. This is just one of dozens of documents that we have, including a registration of a secondary kitchen that was approved and a fee to which we paid for. So I think in the last go-around, the last commission hearing that we had, it was mistakenly the view of the commission, no fault of your own, that in some way, we had not explained fully our intentions of the space. And what you're working with now for a variance only for a sliver of, of a piece of property underneath an existing garage, the reason that your variance application looks like that from us is that's the way the staff insisted that we present it to you. In fact, we've been trying to get our use application in front of the planning commission for those entire 18 months.
Okay, thank you. So what's in front of us tonight is just the location of the wall. And we did ask in the last meeting that a more complete plan comes back so that we can actually evaluate the, the, the room and its intended use as a complete application. So again, for tonight's purposes, we're just looking at the, the location of the wall and the variance for that wall.
Correct.
Okay, are there any other comments?
I'm sorry, there is nobody else on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we can close public comment. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, no more questions. Can I please get a motion for 312 Beach item two?
I'll make a motion.
And can I get, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance application to allow an existing structure to encroach into the side yard setback at 312 Beach Road.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
I'm gonna abstain.
So Chair, if I have the vote tally correct, we have three in favor, one no, and one abstention. So the motion does not carry. I don't know if the planning commission at this point wants to consider another motion on the item.
Why not?
Why does not not carry?
Because it's, the, the planning commission is seven members. And usually the affirmative vote requires affirmative vote of the corps of the body, which would be four votes.
But we're only five right now. Total.
Right. Unfortunately, we don't have a full complement of commissioners. So usually the affirmative, what is required for a vote is based on the number of seats rather than the number of members present at that meeting.
Well, it's not that they're not here, we just only have.
Correct.
So that, that core number doesn't change, is what you're saying?
Right, that's correct. So it still requires for votes to carry the motion.
So I'll, I'll take my vote to a yes, but I just want to make clear that I do not, in my heart of hearts, think that the process here was honored as well as it could have been. I don't think it was expected as well as it should have been. That said, we do have the four corners of a, you know, approved application to pour concrete, have a wall there. And I don't think there's any getting around the fact that that was approved. So in that sense, I think ultimately this would get approved wherever it wound up. So with that, I'll vote yes, but it is not the most enthusiastic yes. I will cast my roll here.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the Chair wishes to rescind the prior vote and we take the vote on the motion on the floor?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I please get a motion for 312 Beach?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve a variance application to allow an existing structure to encroach into the side yard setback at 312 Beach Road.
Can I get a second?
And I will second his motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. Okay, moving on to item three, ordinance amendments for the ADU and junior ADU. I think it would be helpful just to explain this minor change and why it's important to make this change now. And then maybe just a very brief commentary on what will be changing in January and just the plan to revisit the broader.
Sure, code. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson and planning commissioners. What's before you tonight is a zoning ordinance amendment for our accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And this amendment makes changes to our code in chapter 19.79. And on January 16th, 2024, the City Council previously adopted zoning ordinance amendments that made changes to that specific chapter to be in more alignment with our second revised housing element that is under review right now at HCD. One of those intended amendments would have allowed for more square, or allows for more square footage for ADUs if the homeowner deed restricts the ADU to low-income rentals. But this intended amendment was not included in the January 2024 ordinance. And the proposed amendment remedies this oversight by adding that required provision that should resident receive the additional floor area by right, that they would have to come to some, a written agreement with the city requiring that ADU to be rented at a low-income level, according to Marin County, low-income rental. So we did receive a letter from HDF and the comments in their letter don't necessarily reflect the amendment before you tonight. It does reflect the our zoning ordinance that does need to be amended to reflect all of the various state changes that have come about in the past year and that will go into effect in January. So we intend to bring a larger amendment to you hopefully in January that addresses all of those comments in the HDF letter. But tonight, this is very just small and specific to make sure that we get that agreement with a property owner, should they receive the benefit of a larger ADU, it will be rented at a low-income level. And I'm open for questions, should you have any?
Great, thank you. Are there any questions on this item?
Yeah, sorry, one more thing. We have, for about two years, we have had a pending request with HCD to review our ADU ordinance, and we're still waiting for them to give us that, that feedback. And we periodically meet with them and it's in the ADU department, which apparently is pretty backlog right now.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. In terms of the AMI for the, for the affordability, what would, what, what is the, is the, is the proposed AMI? And I understand that this would be done with, without a, without a, a deeded restriction, but just a voluntary agreement between the, the homeowner and the city? So that, so that any, any kind of affordability wouldn't pass, pass along necessarily to the, to any subsequent owner of the property?
It will not be through a deed restrict, restriction because I think that, that is not okay. However, we haven't worked out all of the details of that regulatory agreement. So I don't know, and I, I think Andrew's looking up AMI right now from Marin County. I mean, so it would be written into that regulatory agreement, whatever the AMI is for Marin County.
Right. I didn't know if it was, you know, 60%, 80%, 120%.
I think it's, okay. Very low is 50.
Yeah.
Low is 80.
Low is 80, okay. All right, great, thanks. And we currently don't have any, we don't have any kind of restrictions. And I think the California law doesn't permit any restrict, any restrictions such as a representation stating that the homeowner in, in, in building or developing the JDU or the ADU intends to ever rent it out or use it for any, for any third, third persons or anything like that.
We do, we do have currently in our code, we do not allow rental for less than 30 days.
No, no, I mean, but like, there's no requirement in order for a, a build-out to count under the, as a, as an ADU, not both for her housing, housing element and also for the exemption from all of the, from all the code restrictions that the homeowner make any representation that they intend to rent it out or use it for anything other than a guest room or a home gym.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on this item? Okay. Seeing none, can I please get a motion? I'm sorry, do we need to open public comment? I keep forgetting to do that tonight. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. Can I please get a motion on item three of the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moving on to item E, election of Vice Chair to the Planning Commission. Can I please have a nomination?
Commissioner Johnson may have the pleasure of nominating a member of the commission.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Commissioner Watson for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Can I please get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Say aye or no?
I think so.
Yes, aye.
Congratulations. Does that need public comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak on this item? Is there anyone online?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to public hearings, item four, 270 Beach. Can we please get a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Johnson and members of the Planning Commission. Your consideration this evening is an application for design review and use permit to extend the existing floating dock at 270 Beach Road. The site is comprised of three parcels, including a 10,600 square foot parcel occupying the primary residence, the city-owned tide lot referred to as the Strip, and the recreation zone parcel comprised of Belvedere Cove where the existing floating dock is located. The project proposes a 223 square foot L-shaped extension to the existing 352 square foot floating dock, shown here in orange. The project proposes to install one new 12-inch diameter steel pile and remove two existing birthing piles on the northern side of the existing dock as well. The project would install a new retractable swim ladder as well. The proposed dock would be made of cedar to match the existing, and the steel piling would be painted black. The project site is owned R Recreation and requires a use permit from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission must find that the requested use will not, under any particular circumstance, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, or general welfare of the person residing or working in the neighborhood or be injurious or detrimental to the property and improvements in the neighborhood. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for public review and comment on October 25th, 2024. The initial study identifies mitigation measures to reduce the potential environmental impacts of the project to levels less than significant. While the initial study addresses all topics required by SEQA, the focus of the study is on the potential impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, and noise. Mitigation measures are identified in the initial study that would reduce the potential impacts to less than significant. And these include monitoring, surveying, and implementing yelgrass mitigation plans as well as a noise control plan to minimize noise and vibration on adjacent neighbors from the pile driving. Staff recommends that the required findings can be made to grant the use permit and design review as the proposed construction of the floating dock extension would be consistent with the recreational uses allowed in the R-zone and consistent in size and shape with other docks on Belvedere Cove. As detailed in the draft resolution, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions granting design review and use permit. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission? Couple of questions, more broadly. Have there ever been plans to implement a master plan for shoreline properties? Has that ever been in the works and is that something that we should undertake at some point?
I think we should consider what Mr. Richards addressed and look at the grant deed. I mean, and, and talk about it within the realm of that, that deed from Belvedere Land Company. I don't think we could technically come up with a master plan, but I think he's correct that things like structures need to be defined.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so that's something we can just take back and bring to a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay, would we need a subcommittee? To work on that?
I, I think staff should look at it, bring a report to you guys, and then we would make that determination.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question just had to do with who's responsible for making sure that the mitigation measures put in place are followed?
I think all parties involved, the contractor, the city, people who, the, the city and the contractor and the project managers.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Does the, does fish and wildlife have to do any inspection as well?
Yeah, all the regulatory agencies will be involved prior to, we will not issue a building permit until all the regulatory agencies have approved the plans.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions for staff? Okay. So now we'd like to invite the applicant to speak about the project.
Evening, Commissioners. My name is Alec Wilson. I'm the architect for the House at Beach Road and then representative for this dock project. As a complete presentation from Sammy and staff, I met several of the commissioners out on site. I think that, let's see, can I move it on, Sammy, or do you? I'll go down to the image of the, there we go, perfect. Here you see, or that one's fine too. Perfect, I just wanted to show the, the U-shaped dock that we're proposing, which is an L in addition to the single piece that exists is, is sort of within the confines of what already exists of the main platform and is in keeping with that dock you see on the lower right of the screen. It's just a better way to protect the boat, which was what the birthing piles were for, was to protect a boat onto that floating dock. So the premise here is how to have a boat well-protected and well-boarded at this location. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the commission?
I just want to be clear, there's only one new, one new piling that's going in and two are getting removed?
Correct.
And there's no lighting proposed for the dock at all?
Correct.
Are there any changes to any of the lighting through, on the existing dock or further up?
No lighting is, yeah.
Thank you.
I have one question. And this is more for my own education. A lot of the lots in Belvedere, they go out into the water. Is the dock contained within the boundaries of the property or is it in the bay?
On, on this stretch, on the, on this face of Belvedere Island, they would all be in the bay. Rather than, not only in the bay, they'd be past the tide lot, so not on the property.
Okay, and that's okay. I just, again, I'm trying to, it doesn't really influence my opinion, but I did want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So how do you take out the pylons?
That's actually a good question. I do not know the answer to that. Do not know the answer to that. Sean, do you know? Perfect.
I'm Sean A. Manley, Sunset Ecological Solutions, and I'm writing the permits for the regulatory agencies for this project. They do in fact vibrate them out and vibrate them back in. They do, the agencies do allow some impact hammering, but in this case, I believe they will be vibrating in and vibrated out. Takes about, depending on the substrate, takes less than an hour. That also depends on the substrate, from what I understand. I'm not the engineer on the project. Been through it enough times that I can let you know that they will put the pile down to refusal, which means they can't get it down any further. And sometimes that means 20 feet, sometimes that means 40 feet. You start with a very long stick and you cut the top off when you're done. Sure thing.
Actually, I have one question for you as well.
Yeah.
I'm curious about the materiality of those pilings. I know that they're steel. I'm wondering if there are any other alternative materials or methods that are in the future possible or innovation in that respect?
Absolutely. Piles consist of a few different materials out there that have been used in the past and are still being used. In the past, they used creosote treated timber piles, which are very bad for the ecology of the bay. They keep releasing PAHs and other toxic materials into the bay. So those are not allowed to be used anymore by the regulatory agencies. Beyond that, there are three other materials. There are chemically treated green piles, which I personally have found do not last very long, maybe 10 years. Then there are concrete piles, preformed, precast concrete piles. And then lastly, the steel piles, which are generally coated on the outside with, you know, some sort of material. The steel piles are generally lasting decades. Environmentally, they're a great solution.
It's really interesting context of something that is above and below water simultaneously. It's not an easy job to do for any number of years.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public?
It's Albert Richards from 266 Beach Road. We're right next door. I'm going to call this all, all's well that ends well. We're absolutely delighted that those two kind of stray piles out there are going away. They look kind of industrial. I agree with completely with Alec that this is the way to to maintain a safe boat in the, in the bay with that U shape, and we are delighted and really happy with the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment and I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Alex, would you like to start us off tonight?
Sure, thank you. Well, this seems like a very reasonable proposal. As a boater myself, I can understand why they would want to have, you know, greater access and protection to the boats, and we've seen a couple of these projects come along on the east side of Belvedere Island. I, I think it's great that people are using the water, maintaining their facilities, improving their facilities within any, you know, guidelines and it's well monitored by various agencies and, and I do think that Mr. Richards, I believe is his name, has a good point because of this, this easement. I would like to see the city take up that matter and see if we could get greater clarity in the future. Not that this particular application would have any impact on the access along the shoreline as far as I can see, but I think there's a little bit of cleanup work to do to clarify how people can use their waterfronts along the island. But I will be able to make all of the three findings in favor of this project.
Thank you. Jenna?
Thank you. I want to I want to echo, echo what Alex said. I think that this, this is a, this is a great project. It's obviously in line with what its neighbors with, with the, what the neighbors' docks look like. I do want there to be reporting and I guess serves, you know, surveillance of the, of the construction, especially with, with the coordination with the regulatory agencies. I know that's, that's well, that's well in hand. Obviously, there's concerns about fish, other wildlife. I know when I, when I walk along there, I see, I see a lot of large aquatic mammals saying hello to me. But I think this is, I think this is, this is, this is great, and I also especially with some of the storms that we've, that we've had recently, I think that having a safer place for, for a boat is great.
Thank you. I'm Justin.
I also want to thank the applicant for a thorough and clear presentation. The additional renderings I think are also really helpful to describe things, especially in a moving environment. The context of a dynamic space like this is hard to really grasp, and that's very much appreciated. I can make the findings and echo my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to join my colleagues in making the findings as well. Nothing more forlorn than a dock that isn't being used in Belvedere, for God's sake.
Thank you. I, I echo what's been said. I, I, this is very much in line with other dock improvements in the area, and I think it's a very smart judicious change. And I can make the findings for this project. One thing I wanted to ask is can we just make sure that the removal of the two piles is actually in the resolution? It's in the, it's in the report, but just not mentioned. So just to keep it all consistent. Okay, can I please have a motion on this item?
I can make a motion. And I, I'm just wondering, as I do, where, where would the wording be added for the removal of the two piles that Commissioner Johnson just asked for?
We can make it one of the whereas's, the proposed project requires to remove the
So I don't need to actually come up with the wording?
We'll come up with the wording and then hand it to Chair Johnson in a day or two, and she'll review it.
Yeah.
Okay, then. I'd like to move to adopt the resolution approving the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the proposed project at 270 Beach Road.
Can I get a second? All second? All in favor?
Hi.
Like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving design review to extend the existing floating dock on the city-owned parcel adjacent to the property at 270 Beach Road.
Can I get a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
And finally, I'd like to adopt resolution approving a use permit to expand the existing floating dock on the city-owned water parcel within the R Recreation zoning district adjacent to 270 Beach Road.
A second?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Going to give Alex a minute, and then we can open. Thanks. Okay, I'd like to open the sorry, can we please get a staff report for item five 30 San Rafael Avenue?
Thank you again Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. For your consideration this evening is an application for design review, demolition, variance, and revocable license to construct a new single-family home at 30 San Rafael Avenue. The subject property contains a 2,284 square foot residence on a 6,774 square foot lot in the R1L zoning district. Two utility easements run across the front of the property in the north-south direction. The project proposes to construct a two-story, 3,176 square foot residence with an attached two-car garage. The project proposes to set back the first story 16 feet 5 inches from the front property line, eight feet from the right side yard, and nine feet 6 inches from the left side yard. The home's second story would be set back 10 feet from both side yards. The garage will be located at the northeast portion of the site, 1 feet 10 inches from the side yard and 5 feet 10 inches from the rear yard property lines. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the garage to encroach into the setbacks. Additional improvements will include new fencing, hardscape, exterior lighting, landscaping, and the replacement of an existing bulkhead and dock. The project site is in the AE flood zone where projects of substantial improvement must have an elevated finished floor to meet FEMA regulations and the city's flood plain management ordinance. Here, the home's finished floor would be raised approximately three feet to meet base flood elevation requirements. The proposed height of the two-story home is 22 feet from base flood elevation plus one foot freeboard or 25 feet 10 inches from existing grade. The project proposes two balconies and a series of windows and doors facing San Rafael Avenue. These include two 9-foot by 8-foot 6-inch double-hung windows at the first level and two 6-foot by 6-8-inch sliding glass doors on the second story. Facing Lagoon Road, the home's left side includes two gable-style roofs, maintaining a consistent design with the home's front facade. On the right side of the residence, the project proposes multiple first and second-story windows and a sliding glass door to access the rear patio area. And facing the rear, the project proposes multiple glass doors and windows, including a 10-foot by 6-foot 9-inch sliding glass door and an 11-foot, 11-foot by 6-foot 8-inch fixed window. Colors and materials include vertically aligned board and battened siding in a beige color at the entry door and garage walls and horizontally aligned wood board siding in gray throughout the remainder of the residence. The project incorporates wood trim on the windows, doors, and roof fascia in Sherwin-Williams alabaster white and a gable asphalt shingle roof would be in charcoal color. The project proposes exterior lighting to primarily face the rear patio. Lighting includes seven wall-mounted downlights in a satin black finish and 10 downward casting step lights. The project proposes to remove five trees, including a 22-inch diameter pittusporum at the front yard and a 44-inch diameter magnolia at the rear yard. In total, the project will plant nine new trees. At the front of the property, the project would plant one olive tree to 25 feet tall, two crape myrtle, and an assortment of shrubs and perennials. On the right side yard, the project would plant two olive trees to 25 feet and one juniper to 15 feet. At the rear, the project would plant one olive and one juniper. At the left side yard, two New Zealand Christmas trees, which would be trimmed to a maximum height of 20 feet. The applicant requests a variance to allow the proposed garage to encroach into the 20-foot rear and 5-foot side yard setbacks outlined here in red. The granting of a variance is appropriate only if the criteria under Municipal Code Section 1984010 can be met. First, the granting of a variance will not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. Second, there are special circumstances applicable to the property which would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties if the strict, strict application of the zoning ordinance were applied. And third, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare or injurious to the property or owners of other premises. Here, staff finds that the granting of the variance will not constitute a special privilege because other residences have been granted variances to allow garages and buildings to encroach into setbacks, including here at 20 Lagoon Road and 26 Lagoon Road. Special circumstances apply to the property as well. The road fronting 30 San Rafael Avenue is narrow and at the corner of a busy intersection, and the existing garage has been on lagoons since the house was constructed over 50 years ago. While the city does not regulate driveway locations next to intersections, many jurisdictions recommend driveways to be located at least 75 feet from the curb line of the intersecting street. If this recommendation were considered here, the project could not locate a driveway along San Rafael Avenue due to its frontage being just 58 feet long. Second, the location of the parcel and its surroundings constitute a special circumstance. The front yard above San Rafael Avenue in an area where cars travel upwards of 25 miles per hour proposing a new driveway in this location could be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the owners, oncoming vehicles, and pedestrians. Due to these special circumstances, conforming to the zoning ordinance places an undue burden on the property owners. The project requests a revocable license for private improvements within the San Rafael Avenue right-of-way. These improvements include new landscaping and a concrete walkway. A revocable license may be granted by city council when there is some benefit to the public, provided that the proposed encroachments comply with designer review requirements. Staff has received six letters in support of the project and one letter raising concerns. Concerns centered around view obstruction from the adjacent neighbor. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for public review and comment on November 4th. The study identifies mitigation measures to reduce the potential impacts of the project to a level of less than significant. While the initial study addresses all topics required by CEQA, the focus of the study is on the impacts to cultural resources, including tribal resources. Mitigation measures were identified that would reduce the potential impacts to less than significant. The mitigation measures include monitoring of the site during ground disturbance by both a professional archaeologist and a representative of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancharia. As detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the project complies with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends the planning commission adopt the resolutions for design review, demolition, and variance. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission? Okay. Seeing none, now I'd like to invite the applicant to come speak about their project.
Good evening Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. My name is Andy O'Brodig, and I'm here with my wife Kirsty, and I have lived 30 San Rafael Avenue for the past seven years. Over that time, we've grown deeply appreciative of Belvedere's unique charm, a natural beauty, as well as a sense of community and others. The home we currently live in has served as well, but has begun to show us age and no longer meets our evolving needs. With this in mind, we are excited to propose a thoughtfully designed two-story, 3,170 square foot home for our lot. Throughout the design process, we have worked closely with Mark and Tuan from HTA Architects to ensure our new home reflects both our personal vision while respecting the unique charm of this neighborhood. We have prioritized maintaining consistency with the surrounding homes and preserving the character of the and preserving the character of the neighborhood that we love so much. We believe our proposed project not only aligns with the existing aesthetic, but also contributes positively to the community. We would like to express our gratitude to Rebecca and Sammy for their guidance, professionalism, and patience throughout this process. Working with both of you has been absolute pleasure, and your support has been invaluable. Thank you for your time and consideration of our plans. We're happy to answer any questions you may have and receive feedback you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the commission?
Sorry, it looks like you're hobbling around. Oh, sorry to. Stand up there. I have a question about the encroachment of the proposed garage. So, and I know you and I had a conversation on Sunday about old plans versus new plans, and so if I'm looking at old plans, let me know. But I know that currently, the current garage encroaches upon, I'll call it, the sidewalk spot. There's currently no sidewalk there. And the idea is that it will encroach just a little bit further onto the sidewalk spot. But that you plan to install a sidewalk, a real sidewalk around the corner of your house?
Yes, there's going to be sidewalk, and I think that encroachment is actually the overhang of the roof, I believe. The actual structure is the same, just the overhang increases by, I think, eight inches.
Okay. That's great. And then I'm also looking at, and once again, correct me if these are the old plans, the shaded portion on page A6, sorry. Where where it appears that there's going to be additional encroachment into the rear yard towards 2 Lagoon Road. And I know we spoke about this when I.
It is confusing because the side is actually the back, so that's what we're.
Right, so I just want to.
Five foot 10? Six foot 10?
Because there's a line here that says three feet nine inches. I was just trying to figure out, and then another one that says two feet six inches. Sorry, I'm trying to.
What page are you on there? Sorry.
A6.
Might be an outdated set of drawings.
Okay, because I got two sets of plans.
Yeah, one was the original.
Can you guys use the mic? Sorry, because the people on Zoom, we need to record it. I think Jenna, are you looking at the plans that are part of the initial study? There was a set of plans submitted. That's part of the initial study, and so when we engaged in that process, it was different plans, different in quotes, right, little tweaks here and there. So which are sufficient for the initial study, but the actual plans that you got in your packet are the plans that are under review tonight, those plans.
Could I ask, what is the drawing on that sheet that you're looking at? Is it the?
This is old. This is not what we're.
Okay. My guess was I just wanted to make sure with the applicant and with the architects that there will be the full five feet of space between the new garage and the property line.
There will be, yep. May I pull up a slide to show you the current?
Please, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
So many plans in my package.
We'll do our best to unravel it. My name's Mark Thomas. I'm the architect, along with my colleague Tuan Lu. So let's pull up AO6. So on AO6, that should be on your screen now, the dimensions that are there are current.
Okay.
And that's five feet 10 inches. And that's the new setback at the rear yard.
Great, and the current fence, I know it's very wide because of all of the ivy, but is the current fence in the right space, in the right spot to be the property line?
Approximately, yes, it is.
And just to make sure we're all totally on the same page about which drawing, the correct proposed site plan is on AO6 revision 112 to 2024.
That's correct, yes.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? I have a couple for you. So you have a large window on the second story. It's, I'm going to call it a theater window because it's, I believe it's the hallway connecting the two rooms up there. I think it's a six by, it's like six by 11. So A2.6, you've got a good view. You've got your glass door, and then above that, you've got the second story window. I'm curious about the rationale for the size of this window. Was this something that was sort of decided in conjunction with the neighbors for light, to let the light come through? And if not, I would just, at some point, the home next to you will probably have a second story. They do currently, and that bedroom, from their view, looks directly at that window. So just would love to understand the rationale for keeping it open on both sides, or of that size on both sides.
Sure. This view that's on your screen now is, the window that you just talked about is actually a hallway, a transitional space, and a great area for us to dump a lot of light into the center of the house. But it isn't an area of the house that's regularly occupied. And the two smaller windows off to the left of that window is an entrance hall into a bedroom, and the window next to that is a bathroom. So those windows are, to the far left, smaller scaled and transitional spaces, and to the right, where the larger panes of glass are, another transitional space that's a walkway from the south of the house to the north of the house, at the top of the stair.
Is that to say where it says open, that's open to below, across the hallway to the lower level?
That's correct, yeah.
I think just looking at it from the neighbor's perspective, I think it's 2 Lagoon. It's basically a wall of glass there, and it's looked directly facing them. I would think about just adjusting the size of that top window a little bit. You could still get the light and, you know, views and things like that, but I think reducing in size would be really helpful for light pollution there. Sorry, I'll save my comments for the end, but my other question has to do with some questions that came up about the bulkhead and the dock with the LPOA. So it's not totally clear what exactly the concerns were. But can you just speak to that? Make sure that we understand the issue here, yeah.
Sure. Ken Johnson called us this morning and wanted to talk through the plan for, if you can go to. Let me just pull up a good drawing here. I'd actually like to look at one of the plans, but if we could share our screen. Thank you. We may need your help. Great. Thanks for bearing with us. On the existing site plan, you can see an existing deck at an angle. And along that south line of the deck is where the existing bulkhead is. And we would repair and/or replace that bulkhead. In addition to that, we would also build a new bulkhead from our neighbor to the south, to our neighbor to the east, along the property line. And let me get to the next sheet and show you. If you can pull it up. There we go. Perfect. So we would repair that existing bulkhead that was on the angle and then build a new bulkhead that would connect the bulkhead at the east to the bulkhead at the south. And on top of that, we would install a wood frame deck with concrete pavers. It took us a long time to get to that photograph, but that's the long and short of it. And Ken said that he would feel more comfortable if we could meet together on site so he could better understand that concept. And we said we're available to do that, and he'd like to meet us after the first of the year.
Okay. Okay.
Is there context for that elsewhere on the lagoon as far as that? Is it the materiality that's, or what was it that he wants to meet about?
I think that when we talked together on the phone, it was a little difficult with Ken and his set of plans and Tuan and I with our set of plans, being able to talk logically and cohesively. And he said, with all due respect, I'd like to get together in person and understand it because he said I'd like to know the details a little more than I'm understanding them on the telephone.
Thank you.
It might make sense to have Mr. Johnson come to the site as well, just so you can sort of walk him around where.
That's what we're planning on doing right after the first of the year. So Mr. Johnson will come to the site, we'll walk around with the 2D and 3D drawings, and we can go right down to the dock and have a look.
Great, thank you.
Remind me, building permit doesn't get issued until the BLPOA has signed off on the, or is it?
BLPOA has jurisdiction over improvements in their waters. This is on private property. That's not to say that we don't, as the city, work with BLPOA and the property owners to come to an agreement.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions about the bulkhead or the dock? Okay. We discussed this when I was there, but I'm curious if you give any more thought to where that hot tub might go.
We have discussed that, yes. And I think Andy and Kirsty are probably going to pull the plug on the hot tub. Not install a hot tub.
Okay. Although the plans in front of us reflect a hot tub in that location, so. I just, I may be alone in my thinking on the location of this. I guess I'll wait until we all comment on it, but I guess we would just condition it with the removal of that. Okay, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, are there any questions or?
Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Sorry, in terms of lighting on the Lagoon Road side of the street, I looked at the lighting plan, but I just wanted a little bit more detail on the Lagoon Road side.
Sure, there's minimal lighting planned on the Lagoon Road side. We have a single cube downlight at the right-hand side of the garage door.
Okay, so you. Okay, good. Okay, because I didn't see lights, and so I thought maybe they were missing.
No, it's here, just to the right of the garage door.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Or anyone on Zoom?
I see no one with their hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you. So we will close public comment.
Hold on, someone just raised their hand. Sorry. Ken or Maureen, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Mute.
We can hear you, Ken.
I just got a call on this from somebody who was listening, and I discussed this with our operations board and with the architects today. And my understanding is there's one bulkhead and there's no fill. And now I hear that we're talking about two bulkheads. That's new information. I'm sorry that I'm late, but I assume that the representations made that would be one bulkhead put exactly in the same spot and one dock put exactly in the same spot with the same materials and no info. In fact, I have an email from the architects to that effect that I received before I submitted a letter to the city this afternoon. Have I made a mistake? Please advise me.
Thank you. Can we ask the applicant to respond here?
Sure. Yes.
Yes, we do plan on rebuilding the bulkhead in the same place and then building a new bulkhead out of the same material at the property line, which will connect to the neighbor's bulkhead at the south and the neighbor's bulkhead at the east. And there will be no fill in between those two pieces of construction. But there will be a deck up above it that has palletized concrete pavers on it.
May I speak?
Yes.
That was not represented to me at all today in our conversations. There was no mention of two bulkheads. We had the same problem on number four on Winward. The planning commission reviewed that situation, and it means that the second bulkhead is going to be additional piers or some structure underneath it. But the BLPOA would not approve a second bulkhead in the waters of the lagoon. And I do believe that the water board would also present a problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a question on this? Why is the second one necessary?
The second one isn't necessary, but we need something at the property line to support the edge of the proposed deck that's being built. So I can try to pull that up on the screen and show it to you.
Is it correct that's where the existing bulkhead is? Is that that same line?
No, the existing bulkhead is further back at the existing line of the deck that's canted. a little bit towards the lagoon.
So if I'm looking at the proposed site plan, the arrow from the new bulkhead pointing at the property line essentially is, is further in than the exist, further towards the lagoon than the existing bulkhead.
Yes. This is, this is the, this, this is the approximate line of the existing bulkhead. And this is the proposed line of the new edge of the proposed deck to be built back of the property line. And then this small portion here of the the dock would be preserved as it is. And that portion of the dock sticks out beyond the property line and into the lagoon.
And would there be any new pilings on that portion of the, on that portion of the dock?
No, the, that portion of the dock would remain as is. And then where the, the dock meets the new bulkhead at the property line, it would be fastened to the bulkhead. But no peers being drilled into the lagoon beyond the property line.
Can I ask a question? What happens in between the two, the old bulkhead that you're rebuilding and the new bulkhead? Does water flow through there or is it going to be filled?
No, we're not planning on filling it, but we're happy to talk with Mr. Johnson about that. We were planning to leave that area as it is today. And it slopes gently down to the beach and put a new deck on wood deck on top of that with concrete pavers.
So that existing dock sticks beyond your property line?
This exists, this part of the dock sticks beyond the property line. This is the property line right here.
Would you rebuild it in that same footprint or would you put all onto your property?
We would leave this portion of the dock exactly alone.
And then how does it interface with the proposed deck?
So the, the interface of this dock with the proposed deck is about a six inch step up to the proposed deck beyond the property line onto the property. Can you pull this up to the proposed? There we go. Just show you. So this, this is the, this is that portion of the dock that would remain. And this is, you can see the dotted line below. This is the proposed new position of the bulkhead at the property line. And this area over here would remain void and have a, a wood structure built on top of it that would contain these concrete pavers.
Could I ask a potentially difficult question about the tide line in general? I can see the high tide line. I'm curious where the, the average tide line is in the context.
That might be a difficult question for me to answer tonight. It's right around five. And this area here is 6.09. Oh, sorry, 5, 5.09. So yeah, the, the existing wood dock is at 4.59. And the new stone deck is proposed at 5.09.
And so typically, the water is surrounding that existing dock on, on average.
I can let Andy and Kirsty speak to that. But yeah, the, the water line has been for the last seven years.
Seven years, it's the existing wood dock. The water is usually 68 inches below the top of that. And while we're speaking of the existing bulkhead, I would use that term very loosely. There's not much of a bulkhead there right now, pretty much non-existent. No. But yeah, water has never come above our existing wood dock, which is flush with neighboring docks as well.
I just, sorry, clarify that the wood dock that we saw there is staying or is it being replaced?
It's staying.
So it's not being repaired, replaced with exactly in kind. It's, it's the existing what's there is staying.
It's staying. The only, the only work would be done is how it attaches to or voids the new bulkhead.
Okay.
That would be the only, but as in piers and decking would stay the same.
Okay.
And so just, just for clarity, that, so the, the redwood walls or the wood walls you have there, those, those are essentially marking the neighbors' property.
Yes, they have a, a bulkhead with a kind of like a bench. The deck is say this height, then it becomes a bench two foot to sit on. That's what that existing wood wall is. But that dock is, is, is not in that image now, but it's the same waterline as our.
Have the neighbors expressed any comment on the area?
And no, the neighbors, 234, and they have approved the drawing, so they're okay with, and we have the variance for that dock from them when we purchased the house. They're okay with all that work.
May I respond again to the comments just made?
Yes.
Is that allowable? Thank you. I think these these drawings are not being someone said difficult relationship relative to the truth. This was confusing in my conversation, and I have in front of me Mark's email to me that was sent. It was the basis for my letter to the city this afternoon. And I withdraw my letter on behalf of the BLPOA, and we object to a second bulkhead going into the lagoon. And this is a bit disturbing, Mark. And I don't know what to say, but I'm going to read for the record what you sent me today, so that we know where everybody stands on this, this situation. One second, please. Hi, Ken. Good to talk with you today about the dock, the dock and bulkhead at 30 Santa Fel Avenue. Below is a summary of our discussions. One, bulkhead, replace existing bulkhead per n with no added fill, closed, no added fill material, closed per n. And in current location with new materials to match existing materials. Two, dock, colon, maintain the dock in its current location. Thank you again for discussing the project with us. Best regards. There's no mention, mention here of a second bulkhead. On SB 01, we discussed this morning and a, I believe it was 0.6. This is a, I'm, I'm really quite upset about this, Mark. We spent some time, I called back for clarification. And that was not mentioned. We had a very nice conversation, and I would like to work with you, but I'm beginning to feel that this is a little bit of a card trip. That it's not clear on these plans. It's clarity needs to be specified. And I do not believe that the BLPOA can or would approve a second bulkhead in the lagoon.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Your comments have been noted.
If I could just.
Yes.
Interject my thoughts here. We do have an administrative policy manual on section 19.4801 OD that talks about how setbacks are measured in lagoon zones, and they are when a rear side property line is located in the water, setbacks shall be measured from and parallel to the edge of the water as measured from summer level high tide. So we've certainly discussed this before with other projects. We've had an interpretation. This is sort of for people. This interpretation is more for sort of a gaming the system by pushing your bulkhead out to getting a larger lot. And this is not what's happening here. But I think some of this policy could be looked at through this, what, what is being proposed here, and that we have never had, have allowed a second bulkhead. We don't allow fill in the lagoon. So I think that this is a minor component of this project, and should the commission be in a position to approve it tonight, this is certainly something that can get worked out by the planning commission chair and the director of planning and building, the building official in terms of bulkhead and in terms of a final landscape plan.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, Rebecca, I, I have a question. I, I know this is, this is difficult on a, on a, on a corner lot. And it, the rear, the rear lot, rear here, which is where it, it touches to lagoon. I know that most rear lots are like, we're very are supposed to be 20 feet. And this is, is currently only six feet nine inches, and it proposes to go down to five feet, 10 inches on, on the on a lot like this, is it proper to call it a rear or is it proper to call it a side or I?
Well, we sort of did an unscientific sort of aerial perusal of the entire lagoon.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I think this is one of the only lots where the rear yard abuts another property, like 95% of the lots on the lagoon about the lagoon. Right? And so this is certainly unusual for this this neighborhood and this zoning district. You know, it fronts on Santa Fel. We would definitely call that the front, but I think that's why we're running into the, the situation with the variance.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So.
Just.
What would ever be? When you talk about, when you what's too small a setback? That is, do you have, is there something other than what's written down in the code that says, well, you have to have a minimum clearance of X? Because I don't, first responders need to get back there or something like that. Is there, is there some point at which it's just simply too close?
Yeah, I think the fire department has a setback. I mean, in the lagoon, we have five feet minimum side yard. So this is certainly reads like a side yard. A lot of this encroachment is the, the eve overhang, right? The city of Belvedere measures setbacks from eves, not building walls, which is also unusual. Up on the island, we have a, you can have an average side yard setback, but with a minimum of 10 feet. So we do, in some cases, have minimums. But not here. And I don't know what the fire department's clearance is. But they've reviewed these plans.
I, I share your thought that this, you know, that it's okay to think about the setback maybe as being the, the side setback rather than the rear.
Right, because 20 feet are moving.
I guess while we're talking about the rear yard setback and the, the neighbors, I know that there were some questions about that area and input that the neighbors had, but I don't feel like we talked about it at all tonight. I don't know if it requires conversation, but since it had been a topic before tonight about the tree or the neighbors, is there anything? They're not here, so I guess it's not something we need to talk about.
I, I do note that the removal of the magnolia tree is on, is on the plans that are before, that are before us. And in speaking with roots, that was important to them for adding a bit more light and space into their, into their, into their yard.
Thank you for verifying. I think I missed that that was in these plans.
So what? So it came back to what the chair was talking about earlier, the, that hallway with the large windows.
Talking to your mic.
To, to what extent is the the, the planting able to screen the neighbor from that? Is that even desirable? That is, it, does that get, start feeling too close to the neighbor's house? Is there an opportunity to solve the, the, the window issue with more trees rather than fewer?
Well, we're trying to work with the neighbors in regard with that tree. So we're trying to find a happy medium. We're okay as well to remove the magnolia to allow them more light. And we are putting a fruitless olive tree, which I believe is 15 feet. So, and I think that, that window is, that door is 65 and a half feet away. 62 and a half feet from the property line. So, and the tree is going to be 15 feet. So at what point, we don't want to make the two, the tree too tall, because we're back to the same problem with blocking light with the neighbors.
So I would like to add a comment here. I spoke with the neighbors about this tree. And they were very open and amenable to the idea of retaining the tree and pruning it, because it really hasn't been touched in many years. It needs a lot of work. And opening that tree up would go a long way to solving the light issue. So I just want to put that out there. That was discussed with the neighbors, and they were receptive to that.
Right, and so instead of removing the tree.
Correct.
We're not opposed to keeping the tree.
And then, sorry, I have to. I, I know that the ADU is not before us tonight. However, if you choose to build the ADU, would you be changing the, the roof line that we are looking at approving?
We haven't even talked about doing an ADU. We just put the story poles up to be transparent and to see ourselves and see the neighbors, but we're, no point of deciding we're doing an ADU right now.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for that, because I think that's such a great gesture for the community of like representing the house that you want to build. That's a really, I think, a beautiful way to like represent what you want to be a part of in the community.
Okay, thank you.
There any other questions? Okay. We close public comment. Okay, I will. Thank you very much. Yeah. So I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Jenna, would you like to start us off tonight?
Sure. So when I went to go see the site on Sunday, you know, it's, it's a unique site. It's on a, it's on a corner. It's on a very busy street in the front, and obviously lagoon road on the side. And it's I don't want to say hemmed in by its, by its neighbors. One side is, you know, obviously the sort of the blank, the blank wall of one of its neighbors. The other side, the neighbors, the neighbor's very, is very close. And I think this is a great opportunity to build a new house, which as much as I love the old cottages, new, new house, new house looks great. I appreciate the design, the design of the new house. I appreciate the fact that it's largely in the same footprint as the existing house. And I think it, it stylistically, it's, it's very, very nice looking. And I think it would fit with, fit with the neighborhood, the neighborhood really, really well. I'll leave aside the, the, the discussion of the, of the bulkhead and the, and the dock. I know that there's additional discussion to be had with the BPL, BLPOA on that, on that matter. The, the only part of the, of the house that gives me any pause at all is the increase in, in the size of the garage to go into the already sort of scant space between, between the house and two, and, and two lagoon road. I know that, you know, one foot doesn't really seem like, like a lot, but when you're, when you're dealing with, you know, a difference between six, six feet nine inches and and five feet 10 inches, it is, it is quite a lot. I don't have any issue with the, with the, with the increase in the, in the overhang on the lagoon road. I don't have any issue with the, uh, with the, with the increase in the, in the overhang on the lagoon road, roadside, I understand that's your, that's your. Garage. And I greatly appreciate, um, as a, as a walker. Um, the, um, improvement of the side of, of the side of the house with the, with the, with the sidewalk. Um, so. With. So the only consideration that I would, that, that I would ask the homeowner to give is. Whether or not there's any. Skinny-ing of the garage that could possibly be done to give the neighbors back another, another, another foot. Um.
May I respond? Uh, the garage is the same location, again, the overhang is what's making it.
It's, 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 it's just the overhang that's making it.
The one that's crossing, the garage is the same location, it's just overhang.
So the wall, the walls are in the same spot.
Location, and actual garage is getting smaller in depth in total, but the wall is staying the same, it's just overhang is increasing by eleven inches or eight inches.
That's, that's very good information, thank you very much. All right. Well, then. Um, because I saw here it says increased root, root overhang for the side yard, but not for the rear yard, I misconstrued that, thank you.
And the overhang, again, as Rebecca said, the overhang, the measurements come from the overhangs, not actually the walls. So the overhang is increased on all sides.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. So anyway, so as I said, like leaving, leaving aside the, uh, the dock, the dock and the bulk, and the bulkhead issues, which I think need to be, need to be worked out between the applicant, the architect. And the BPL, BLPOA. I believe that I can make all of the, all of the findings, um, with that, with that condition, thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes, I too will be able to make all the findings and as a, uh, certainly as a dog walker, I appreciate, um, getting that. Uh, corner so you can take a left-hand turn there without swinging out in the street all the time, so thank you for that. Um. It, it's absolutely clear that the lagoon property owners have a concern about the bulkhead and I'm. Equally convinced that that's well. Outside my ability to determine what makes sense there, but I'm just going to trust the process here and assume that will, um. Get worked out, but otherwise I think the design works very well for that spot, I guess my first thought on hearing, looking at the storing poles. Uh, when I was driving by, I said, yeah, it's crowding the property a little bit. But as you get into the backyard and kind of appreciate the spaces and. Um, the sections and so forth, I, I think it's a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, so, uh, I'm going to be, make the findings. Thanks.
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you, this has been an interesting conversation and education for me on the relationship between some of these sites that deal with. Complex circumstances being on San Rafael, dealing with the storms, I'm impressed that the story polls even stayed up during the last storm. Um, I echo my fellow commissioners and, uh, trust the process that things will, will go appropriately with the bulkhead and. Uh. Uh, can make the findings.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Johnson, we have, we can trust the process to you, but I think it's important for us to add a condition of approval. RE the bulkhead.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you, it's on my list, thank you.
We haven't, okay.
No, go ahead.
Does that mean I have to?
No, you're good.
Well, we'll get back to it, we'll come back to that, let's circle back on there, on the bulkhead. Um, so I, um. I just want to say, um, I think the neighbors may be dialed in, but I, I think that these lagoon projects are the hardest projects that we have to evaluate. Um, because you're dealing with, um, FEMA requirements next to homes that are really old and, um, low to the ground and. Um, so it creates a very challenging and sometimes contentious, um, issue with neighbors and, um. It's very hard because we can't make everyone happy, but we do our best, um, to consider not just the home, but the, the neighboring properties, so I just wanted to say that. Um. Uh, for, for the neighbors, um, as I did visit, um, their property and saw it from their point of view, so. Um. Generally speaking, I think this is a, a pretty successful lagoon project. Um, and I am, and generally in agreement with the staff report and the comments that have been made with a few, um, comments and things that I would add. Um, so in terms of the landscaping, I think it's a huge, huge mistake to remove that magnolia tree. Um, it's seventy, eighty years old, um, it's an incredible tree, it needs some TLC really badly, it needs to be pruned and taken care of, and I think. Um, with a little trimming here and there, it can really be brought back to life. Um. And, uh. I, if with the right pruning too, it would solve the issue for the neighbors, but it would also maintain some, um, not just, you know. For privacy, some screening, but just a, a little bit of a sound barrier too, because you're, you're so close, you're in such close proximity there, and I think. Um. Um, there's no reason to take that tree out, it's not in the way, um, it's a beautiful tree, it, um. Um, I think it's a friend for both of you there, and I think it needs to stay there. Um. And, uh. I would also, so on that, on the tree comment, I think, um, that tree needs to stay and be pruned, and then you actually have a tree just in front of it, and I'm forgetting. Uh, I'm forgetting what kind of tree it is, but.
The chain tree. Like the, this one.
Yes. Um, now that tree, um. Could come out, if you're looking to open things up a little bit, um, that's a place I might look at, because actually for the neighbors on the other side. That would let a whole bunch of light into their dining area, right now it's very shaded, so. Um. Something to consider, um, I would condition an approval on keeping the magnolia certainly, and I would just look at that whole side there. Um. In that context, so. Um. We also talked about this when we met, but I think that you also need, um, at least one more tree in the front yard for additional screening, if you drive down Santa Fel Avenue, it's. The entry to Belvedere and many of those homes have a bunch of greenery in front of them and a lot of trees, so. Um, again, very carefully placed, um, not to obstruct your beautiful views of the water on the other side, but to frame them. And to provide a little bit more, um, screening for the home. Um, you are on a corner, you're very visible, um, right there, and I, I just think it would go a long way to add one or two more, and I think you have space for it. Um. So I think, um, in terms of your lighting plan, it really shows restraint and is very considerate, so well done, I don't think I've ever said that. You have one wall-mounted light on the eastern side of the, the garage that I don't think you need, it's totally extraneous, it's just going to be on and like shining in the neighbor's. Room, so if you need a light there, I would put a pathlight, um, so you have, you know, for your walkway, but. Um, aside from that, I think the, the lights are well-placed. Um, and then, um, again, we always consider glass on the lagoon, um, for, for, um, you know, light pollution and. The way that you're situated makes this a little bit unique, because you don't have a bunch of glass fronting the water and creating that reflection. But I would, um, consider reducing that window, um, that hallway window, um, because you do have neighbors right there, and it just kind of creates a glass box. With the glass door beneath it, and then you're stacking another, you know, six feet on top, six by eleven feet, which is a really good sized window, so. You can keep it open for light, um, but just reduce it in size, and I think that would really help. Um, and be very considerate for the neighbor, so. Um, I had comments about the hot tub, um, it sounds like it's coming out, but I would. Say if you are keeping it in, I would look for another location for that hot tub, I think it's. Um, better for you as well. I don't think you want to be right on the edge next to your neighbors having a great time and. Um, they're right there looking at you, that's just my two cents on that, I think it's much nicer to have it tucked in closer to the house, so. Um. So, uh, like I said, I think, um, I think it's a good project, I think, um, you know, it does meet our, um, criteria, I can. Make the findings for the variance given the, the specific, um, considerations for this project and trying to minimize cut and fill and. Um, it makes a lot more sense to have the garage there than on the other side, so. Um. And, uh, so I would condition an approval on keeping that magnolia tree. And providing a tree protection plan for it during construction and. Um. I, uh, would also condition approval with getting, um, a, a very clear. Plan showing one bulkhead, um, uh, and getting approval. Um, if not approval consensus with the BLPOA so that, um, it's. Per their standards. Um. So those are, um, those are my comments on the project. Um, I guess I would ask, do I have support on the conditions?
So, so the two, right, Ashley?
Yes, so the. And just so you know, the, um, the landscape and lighting comes back for another review before building permit, so if you do make additional tweaks to it, it will come back, but. So yeah, so the, um. Removal of the light on the side, um, but it's the tree, so keeping the magnolia tree, tree protection plan.
And, uh, and coming up with a bulkhead plan in conjunction with the.
Right, exactly.
If I could, could chair, could I make one suggestion if you don't mind?
Mm-hmm.
Um, regarding the third condition regarding the bulkhead.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it would be our suggestion from staff that the building official also be part of that meeting of the minds with the property owner and BLPOA.
Okay.
And then obviously, the final location is also signed off on by the building official.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. So I, I think I'm feeling like maybe I have support on the conditions, that, okay, okay, so can I, um. Can I please? Have a motion? Do you have a question? Comment?
I didn't know.
Okay, okay. Okay, so can I please get a motion?
Back to my motion page. Thank you. So many pieces of paper. All right, um, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. For the proposed project at thirty San Rafael Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Like to adopt the resolution granting design review to construct a thirty, thirty-three thousand one hundred and ninety square foot. Single-family residence and attached garage at thirty Santa Fel Avenue.
Can I get a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Excuse me, is that the one we condition? Yeah, I think that motion is where you want to add the three additional conditions that Chair Johnson suggested, and you don't need to read them all.
Just as, as condition design.
Yeah, sorry for the interruption.
Scratch that, I would like to adopt a resolution granting designer view to construct a three thousand one hundred and ninety square foot single-family residence. Attached garage at thirty Santa Fel Avenue with the following, with the following conditions as explained by Chair Johnson. The retention of the magnolia tree at the rear of the property together with a tree protection plan during construction. The resolution of the bulkhead, uh, the bulkhead plan with the BLPOA and, I'm in conjunction with the building official. And the removal of the.
We, yeah, we don't have to condition that, it'll come back, um, for final approval.
Okay.
So that's fine.
All right, with, with those, with those two conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Like to adopt a resolution granting demolition permit to demolish the existing two thousand two hundred and eighty-four square foot residence. At thirty Santa Fel Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, granting a variance to allow a structure to encroach into the side and rear yard setback at thirty Santa Fel Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I would like to make a motion to recommend to the city council the approval of a revocable license. The private improvements located in the public street right of way at thirty Santa Fel Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, congratulations. Hey, I think that, uh. Drops up our meeting and I will now adjourn, thank you.